Kids, five o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Monday, March 21st, 2016. Item two, roll call. Gordy Dow.
Here.
Michelle Hebner, here. Michael Holden.
Here.
Tony Corpey, here. Adam McBride, Kevin Grover.
Here.
White Andal. Please sample the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 4.0, preview and approval of agenda. Make an motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Board chair, if I could, there is an addition in front of you for 11.4. A person was left off the agenda by accident. Carla Wilson might should be on there to renew at her current level of 0.6. There's a state attachment. Other than that, I do not have any corrections.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Our paper is amended. I.
I.
Outpose. Motion carried. Item 5.0, open forum. 5.1, march students as a month. Kyla McKenzie and Jake I.
I always get the good fortune of reading up student of the month. And this month, March, I got Kyla McKenzie. Kyla is the female march student of the month. Kyla has finished in her senior year this year, and I was wondering why I can't read. In her spare time, she enjoys hunting, fishing, four-wheeling, and finding time to read and write. According to Kyla's teacher, she has been a star student in her classes the past two years, especially in her creative writing course. And she always has a positive attitude and eager to learn. Kyla has a strong character and is a pleasure to have in class. Kyla is planning to attend Rainy River Community College in the fall to earn her AA degree. She will also be job shadowing at the Rainy Lake Medical Center and the Physical Therapy Department. After Rainy River, she plans to attend the University of Minnesota to reach her degree in physical therapy. All right, next person, student of the month is Jake I. And Jake is the male march student of the month. Jake has been on an A honor roll consistently throughout his high school career. Jake also is a basketball athlete, participating in both hockey and baseball this year as a senior, and has been awarded the honor of captain of both teams. In his spare time, Jake loves to hunt and fish. According to Jake's teacher, he is a bright young man who shows school spirit, involves himself in activities, and excels both in sports and in the classroom. Next year, Jake will be attending the University of North Dakota and plans to major in business management.
Okay, while we're waiting for the come back, I will go over what the open forum rules are. If you have not, please complete a card. And I have several in front of me. And item number two on this is please limit discussion to three to five minutes. So if it ends up going much longer than that, I will have to try to limit the time because there are several people that need to talk. And item number three, do not expect board members to respond to your issue until they have an opportunity to investigate your concern. You should do so either by letter or in person or at a later rate appropriate. They may respond immediately. If you have written comments, the board would appreciate having a copy, which will improve both their understanding of your concern and their ability to investigate and respond to issues raised. Please be aware that no presentations will be heard, which in the judgment of the chair, are of a personal nature directed at individuals either by name or inference. The privilege of addressing the board will be terminated if this guideline is not followed. Complaints of this nature should be directed to a counsel or superintendent for administrative concern. So that's for the open forum. And 5.2, Purple Pride.
Purple Pride. My name is Terry Thompson, and I am a co-chair of the Purple Pride Committee. We are a subcommittee of the Falls Education Foundation, and we provide funds for extracurricular activities within the school. One of the things that we'd like to do as a committee would be to consolidate all our fundraising efforts into one effort and not have every extracurricular group going to the businesses for money. We'd like to have it a one-time deal. Not that we want to take anything away from the booster clubs. We still want them to do their fundraising, their spaghetti feeds, car washes, raffles, or whatever they want to do. But as the Purple Pride Committee, what we would like to do is be the clearinghouse for all extracurricular activities. Thus, we would like to have us be the people or the group that goes out to get money from the businesses. And in the past couple of years, in my solicitations with the businesses, it has been their wish that we would hit them up just one time as a school group. So, and I think as, well, I know as a group, this would work much better for us, and we would have a lot more money. We'd probably have a lot more cooperation from the groups, too. So we would like to get put on the agenda so we can have a formal discussion about this, and we will present a, we'll have a presentation written up by then. So again, our group wants to meet with everybody so we can all get on the same page. Because right now, everybody's going in a different direction trying to make money, so.
Would that be a question for next month, you're thinking?
That would work. It's up to you, yeah.
Yeah.
I think our committee can get something put together for them. Anybody have any questions? Does everybody know what Purple Pride is, what we do? Our main fundraiser is the Altar for Money Summit. And I think we made $12,000 last year for extracurricular activities. And we can give grants to the groups that don't have enough money for their programs. We would like eventually, as a group, of course, this is looking long range, be close to the $500,000 to $1 million range. We're looking out there for 10, 15 years, but it's possible, so.
Do you plan a meeting with all of the other booster clubs before then, before the next meeting? Or how do you plan on?
Well, I don't know if they'll have time for that before the next meeting. Co-chairs, can you speak on this?
I'm guessing no.
I think we could look at something by the middle of the summer where we could get everybody together. Any other questions anybody have? Thank you.
Item 5.4, public open forum. And this is where I'll just go through the cards here. Amanda Thayer.
Hello, my name is Amanda, and I'm speaking. I have our students and the parents of students that go to the Alternative Learning Center. The Alternative Learning Center has been God-sent for our place, who have had to deal with an array of special circumstances throughout their lives and had not a chance to attend regular high school. And they have completely flourished at the Alternative Learning Center, both in school and out of school. And we feel that that is due to the educational culture perpetuated by Joseph Kraus. And we feel that he is an irreplaceable member. And there's no one more qualified to help these kids. He makes the point to get to know them, makes sure that their character is provided by a positive male role model in their lives, which some do not have. That's all I have. But we do implore you to please keep him as the educator of the community.
Thank you. Stephanie Stig.
Stig. My name is Stephanie Stig. And we students of the Alternative School have come here today to address how we feel about Mr. Kraus being let go. We all have come to this school as troubled teens, thinking we're not going anywhere. We're going to graduate. Coming to the ALC is not easy for any of us to do. We were all stubborn and rude and way behind in our schoolwork. As troubled teens, we just didn't care. Mr. Kraus has helped us realize that graduating was important and that it would be harder for us to go into a world of adults. Mr. Kraus has treated us as, one of his own, and has taught us not the only basic school subjects, but most important life lessons, such as people skills, self-worth, and work ethics. You as a school board may see us as just a class standing in front of you. But Mr. Kraus has made us so much more than that. We are a family, and taking him away from us would be like taking a parent away. The goal for us was to be able to catch up and move back to the high school, but honestly, we have done way more work with Mr. Kraus than we have the past year in the high school. Mr. Kraus took a chance coming here to teach kids that were moved from the high school. We come to ask for a better teacher to come in and teach us. Not just anyone will be able to come into a room full of kids that were not determined to graduate or to even show up for a school and turn that completely around. Mr. Kraus has changed our lives for the better. He is the reason we will graduate and become better people. Again, we are here standing before you as a class, begging you not to take him away from you.
Don. Mark.
That's my daughter. When Stephanie started the Alternative School, and I drank her in there like it was the first day of preschool. I mean, anybody that in this room, that was in the room on the date that we decided to send her there, it was not a good day at all. As a troubled child, you just feel hopeless. Like, we tried online, and she came here, and she's been handed. And alls I wanted was for her to graduate and just be, you know, a responsible adult. And she's a junior. When she started there, she had two credits for graduation. She now has 11. Mr. Kraus is the reason that my daughter and all these other kids, I don't even have to wake her up in the morning. She's up, and they want to be there because he's wonderful. He gets to know them, he cares. It's their stability. You know, they need that. These kids need stability, consistency. And what Mr. Kraus and Mrs. Rablone do over there for these children is remarkable. I mean, the school that serves, it's hard to have them there with these kids because for us parents that thought there was no hope for our kids, there is hope. And I can't even, four months ago, my daughter went out and stood up here and talked to any of you. And she's just flourished. She's a wonderful person, and we owe it all to them, to these wonderful people over there. And we are begging you not to take him away from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey, mine.
I had to write this down because this is very emotional for me and for the changes that I've seen in my son along with the other kids and how much growth that they have had. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to express my view on the decision of your, that you're about to make concerning the future of the ALC and Mr. Kraus's position. My son Ryland has been working with Mr. Kraus for two years now. He was diagnosed with emotional behavior disorder during elementary school after his father and I divorced. He had struggled most of these years concentrating on his classwork and getting along with others. As he progressed into high school, it didn't get much better, and he began getting in trouble in and out of the school. With the disruption of going to the juvenile center over the next few years, his education has taken a harder hit yet. Once he was enrolled in an alternative program, he began to get back on track. But it wasn't until Ryland started at the ALC with Mr. Kraus that he began to excel. Ryland respects Mr. Kraus and Miss Rablone and all of their efforts in helping him succeed. For the first time in many years, he was excited about school and wanted to. He likes it there and everybody who is there. Ryland was getting the best grades he had ever earned, and he was forming connections with his classmates like he's never known before. I've seen a lot of growth in not only my son over this past year, but also in the other kids in his class. I contribute much of this to Mr. Kraus's ability to truly connect and understand our children. He recognizes their strengths, reassures them that they are not the bad kids our community has labeled them as. And he has the gift to harness many other insecurities that they may have had, making them not only better students, but also better members to our society. Mr. Kraus holds his students accountable for their actions and reactions, but also shows praise when they do well. His students respect him and are afraid of losing him due to the cutbacks, not only as a teacher, but as a confidant. They trust him and actually look forward to going to school every day. They don't have the belly aches, the tooth aches, the headaches, and all the other excuses that I'm sure most of you parents can advertise that it's hard to get these kids motivated to go. Mr. Kraus has built friendships out of battleships amongst these kids during the process. Mr. Kraus is more than a teacher. He is an asset to the success of his program. And in short, he came like family, not only to his students, but also to his parents. Mr. Kraus and Miss Rablone are role models to these kids. They see the potential and the natural leadership skill these kids have to offer, but they do not lose their authority over their students. Mr. Kraus is multifaceted and goes above and beyond when it comes to his students. He also does this for the parents, keeping us well informed of our child's education and any other concerns that may come up. It's refreshing to work with someone of Mr. Kraus's caliber in the education system. He values not only himself and his future, but also those of our children. Our children are Mr. Kraus's children. And with saying that, I would like to conclude my opinion by saying this. If your decision is to take Mr. Kraus from the program, then ultimately, you're also taking the program away from your children.
Thank you. Krista Burge.
My name is Tristan Burge, and I'll be reading on behalf of Dylan Forsen, who couldn't be here to do work. Dylan, like, at first, he didn't want us to go to school because he was behind. He thought his only choice was dropping out. And due to the ALC program, he's excelled. He's become part of the family that's kind of flourished at the Alternative School. And it wouldn't have been possible without Kraus being there. And if you take him away, it's ultimately, not a lot of the students want to go back.
I'm reading this on behalf of Dylan Forsen, who couldn't make it due to work. You would like to speak about the recent budget cut, which involves Mr. Kraus. He started at the Alternative School at Wackensville, Illinois. At first, he didn't want to go there because he didn't want to go to any school because he was so far behind. He kind of only chose to drop out. But he, but here he is four months later, way ahead of the game. He has a half a credit, and you can say that it thanks the program. But the truth is, it's because of Mr. Kraus. His hard work and devotion to Dylan gave him the encouragement to want to graduate. Dylan has been to every school in the area, Little Fork, Bigfoot, Falls High School, and even Almont for a while. Nothing ever seemed to work. It's not that he didn't want to graduate. He wants to, but his anxiety and fear of losing, he just feels behind and wanted a new fresh start. But that wasn't a success until he started the Alternative School and brought in. He made it through, welcomed by Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Rablone. He finally felt accepted and felt content with his academics. They made him feel great as far as his schoolwork, self-esteem. We've all thought that as a family, we, and when we heard that Mr. Kraus might be taken away, it really hurt us. As a family, we don't know what we would do without the constant support and caring of Mr. Kraus and Mrs. Rablone together. There has to be some other way of handling this situation.
McKenzie, Johnson.
Hi, my name is Michael Thompson. I'm sophomore at the Alternative School located in Wackensville. My teacher friends are Mr. Kraus and Mrs. Rablone. I left the Falls High School group. Teachers have had issues to make remarks about my family and me. I didn't feel accepted there. I have one friend, my teachers were always busy because of how I've been. I felt embarrassed being in such a school environment because I didn't pass my eighth grade year for certain classes. I asked Mr. Grober to have me try and have a conference, and he said that if you're there, I understand school districts don't want to watch the recruits running around passing albums and that I'll agree that I've made some pretty bad choices in my past. And if I don't want to, I do most teachers forget that they don't care about my future, but I really want to succeed in my school. I really want to graduate on time. Having a small class with two teachers is so much more helpful. Maybe things would be, maybe things would have been different if I went to an alternative where I didn't have teachers who were really careful, not only my schoolwork, but also Mr. Kraus has helped me with my online assignments. It's funny times to finally for once in my life, my passing classes, and I showed the same amount of students in classes. College didn't count, and I care, it's impressive. Everyone's, we were, we were enjoying it. And we're happy, we're a good family. Most of the two teachers don't want us to do that. Mr. Kraus really cares about us and our future. He cares about us staying out of trouble, make sure we have not only school records and love, but a lot of love and tolerance and other things we can eat when we're having a class, even if it is for open money. If we have a conflict or problems in the classroom, we trust her alone and all. All in all, I think Mr. Kraus is a good man, but even better as a teacher for us. We would do anything for him to stay. Yes, we love our stuff at one point, but we've all changed so much since we've been out there. We all have time to put it, if you're wondering if there's any other options rather, thank you for your contribution. If you're the panel, thank you, Chair, and you can help with this school, my greatness. We don't have to.
Anyone for the open forum? Okay, thank you. Old Business. Item 6.0, adopt the 2016-17 FHS 7 period date course section document setting numbers of sections per department and course. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Other discussion?
Board meeting package is a document put together by Mr. Iverson on the group call. We were in the process last month of registering. So he, him along with most of the credit probably should go to Mr. Grewatz and Ms. Tonado for getting the data entered when the kids register. And Tim puts the sheet together, which outlines the number of courses, and it has what we are currently at compared to what's proposed for next year, and then, you know, what the Class 1 section at, third kids are one at 17. And it took time to look through. It has it by department, math, social studies, science, and so on. And why this is put out, put out to you is we made like a sixth grade reduction. We made an eighth grade and a 10th grade pass. There are adjustments here, you know, classes were added, classes were taken away based on enrollment. Okay, and so we're asking that this be, you know, adopted so that we can, you know, it's a staff meeting, you know, at the high school does not have names attached to it because that comes into the seniority and our job to make recommendations. So this is an update. Again, you'll see some classes that, I'd like to say the numbers are going well, or at least proposed to go well. Keep in mind though, this is what was registered for. We actually put master schedule together. The kid could have a conflict. Numbers will change, so don't come back and say, you know, I'm just picking the top class. Math reading, we had one section of 20 kids. It could end up being 18. You know, there could be some slight variation. But it's trying to show you that we aren't running things with two or three kids, you know, or five kids. So that's what this is.
Go along with that, Kevin. Do you think you could possibly explain to everyone? Because there's been several places where we've had reductions, and it's a very complex process to go through that. Could you possibly explain a little bit of all that's done?
I can talk, I guess, in general, as far as, and I don't know what people sitting here know or don't know, there is a seniority system as well as a stranding system. And in education, for instance, I have a math license, 712, okay? I cannot go teach at the elementary any. Okay, so based on licenses, that's where we can put people. And I'm going to pick on Science Department. They have four full-time people. They're all continuing contract people. By law, it's called a strand decision, okay? That's the name given to him was a person pushed, pushed in through the court case. If we're going to reduce people, we have to look at the probationary people first. And continuing contract have to have a right. So right now, for instance, with some of the reductions being made, we have people at the high school level that don't have courses, but they have seniority. So for instance, we've had people this year, we have four sections in sixth grade, but we really have three full-time teachers and a bunch of the high school staff push in there because they have that right. Okay, so we're in the same place. We're reducing now their staff that need to go somewhere. And legally, they have the right if they have seniority and the right license. But I'm just going to say, I don't know if downfall is the right word. The alternative school, you need a Minnesota teaching license, okay? You don't need a math license or a specialized license or a science license. Any teacher, could be elementary, could be any subject, could have a right in there. Right now, we really have two options. We either need to push down into fifth grade some more, okay, to meet the needs, or we have to use the alternative. And that's where, that's where the recommendation administration is coming from. I want to say it on the record, is not to have seven different teachers. That is not what's played out, okay? I think we can do it with two different, because I will say from my standpoint, I think a different person every hour would not be a successful setting. And that's, that's where we're at. I don't know if that helps. Now, I will put it out, you know, it is possible if there isn't a place for people who go continuing contract people, they can be put on unrequestably. We don't have to go down that route. We do have probationary people, which is a three-year process. I should maybe hit on that. When in Minnesota, a new teacher has to put in a probation period of three years. For the most part, for any reason, they For the most part, for any reason, they can be let go at that time, okay? Whether it's reductions, which most of ours are, whether they're not meeting the grade, you know, for just about any reason. Um, so there are people that unfortunately may be being affected with their first year, second year, third year. In that three years, there's no seniority. Is that what you were looking for or?
Yeah, just, just a little explanation of part of the process that goes through with trying to reorganize this when we do go through reductions. It's not, none of these decisions are made lightly, there's a lot of deliberation and looking at data, looking at people's licenses, looking at their probation, looking at their seniority. There's a lot of information that goes into making these decisions, none of these decisions are made lightly.
And I guess I would comment even, and, and I would say they, and I don't have the exact quote, Emily in the paper hit it on the head in what I said, if you saw the paper. We are going to lose, um, some good staff and, and I truly mean that, it's part, part of the process, whether whoever it is, we're going to lose some good staff. I think in the meeting that I had with different people, I hopefully portrayed that.
Looking at your, uh, course section scenario, it looks like you're reducing, um, sections at a high school by, it looks like, uh, almost two to ten.
It ends, yep, and then if you take, that, that's where we were at with the sixth grade, eighth grade, and tenth grade. And then with the push into the elementary, it comes to three point five four. And that's where we were on track, the budget reduction, we were at two point five until we came to this. We pulled another one, actually said we would.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor to adopt the seven period course date selection document? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item seven point zero, discussion with potential action on per-cycle science curriculum, could I get a motion?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second, discussion please?
Okay, if, if you recall, in the budget reduction process, we've been going back, kind of back and forth, whether we should move as we have over the, um, I don't know how many last ten, twelve years, whatever, of doing a per-cycle each year, and this happened to be the year of catch-up, um, to meet some needs. Or were we going to go a tech route, look at going a one-to-one initiative? Okay, I told you I meant to, yeah, I think I told you last time, I was tracking time that I was meeting with the high school and the elementary. We had some discussion and the question is, are we ready to move that way or should we continue with the typical per-cycle? I guess, the, the feedback I've gotten is, we're not ready to go to the one-to-one. Um, we want, as I was going to say, um, we want to make sure we have enough training in place and do it correctly, I guess, is the right thing. I'm not saying staff does not support it all, um, there's, there's mixed feelings, there's some uncertainty. We're jumping in maybe both feet first into the one-to-one initiative. So I guess I'm asking for permission to keep going, uphold the agreement we have with the taxpayers, which is to do a per-cycle. Um, this teacher's text, technology textbook, I think was the, um, agreement years back. And so just asking for it, and it's not a budget, there's, there was a hundred and thirty thousand in there. For the, um, science is up this year, okay? It, it would be definitely a scaled-down person. But we need to move it, we're going to move, the teachers are going to help in and get ready to do that. So that's, that's where we're at. And then we will, the plan is to continue training, the training in order to explore the, well, continue the school of G or the training, which we can do. We have Chromebooks, we have computers, so we will work to train and we will come back next year roughly this time and reanalyze, are we ready to move one-to-one? Because the last thing, and I, I mean, I think the board would agree, would be to get, you know, um, Chromebooks for every kid and have care of their own, not use them. So, um, that is the take, we're not ready there. And so, um, I guess I'm just asking that you direct us to keep going with what you've done in the past with the person.
I think so, I think that sounds right. Any further discussion?
The only thing I guess I would ask is if you're going to do that, would you change the motion, you know what I'm saying, to direct to proceed with the science adoption for next year?
Gordy, do you want to change the session? Do you have to change the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me, you state it.
Yep.
My motion is to change, uh.
To go forward with the adoption.
Have the administration go forward with the adoption of per-cycle, for science, for science curriculum.
Twenty-two second, nice second. So we have a motion and a second, moving forward with the adoption of the per-cycle for the science. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. New Business, item eight point zero, grant permission to let bits from the Bronco Arena Elevator project. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
I have a motion and a second, discussion?
You have a sheet in front of you and, um, I gave you a heads up, um, I had to actually approve. Um, Jim Lukacek is the architect that we're working with, he's putting a timeline in front of you. I also, um, had Sue copy, he sent some drawings for you, if you want to look at. Um, for the most part, what's going to happen, if you can envision, um, there's two stairways coming down from upstairs in the arena. The one on the far side where there's the pot machine and I don't know what else, then you can go up the doors into the lower level parking lot. In that area, there will be a shaft built, okay, along with a mechanical room, small attached to it. That fits between the door and that wall, it does not go into the, um, stairwell. It will go up, there's an enclosed area that goes over to just past where the door would come out upstairs, you can see it on the drawing. And that's where we'll enter the building, okay? Um, that is the plan. The big cabinet that is there, that has trophies and everything, that will actually move to the, I'm going to say kitty corner of the wall next to the concession stand where the full, the picture, I don't know what you call that, folding pictures. It'll go there, those pictures will come over to the space where, that's left where the cabinet was. So, um, it is, from his standpoint, the most economical route, you don't have to do a shaft outside the building. You know, that was, I think, the original plan years back. And for the most part, it doesn't interfere with any, um, plumbing and stuff that's below. Um, that was some concern and so what we're asking again, um, you have a timeline here, is to move forward with this. He will get the actual info and we'll get the bids going. The only piece that I would, I guess, suggest we plan on is if you see the bid opening when they're back in is like the nineteenth of April. And then we would work to, um, make a choice on the contractor. And at that point, roughly the end of April, beginning of May, I would ask the board to come back for a meeting just to award that bid. Because what happens is they have to order the elevator, you see on there, it takes six to eight weeks. And so no contractor, you know, if we wait till the middle of May, it pushes it back. So, um, and obviously, um, if bids come in way high or whatever, that's the time the board would consider, you know, um, truly to move forward. So the only issue I can see is he feels he can't fit it in before a, you know, to have everything in, so, um.
Do we have any preliminary estimate what elevator might cost in the period?
Around a hundred and fifty thousand is what, um, ballpark is. We originally thought it would be about two hundred, now again, no guarantee, that's where. The other plan I should say is, just so you're aware, is, um, and this piece is not in there, he's doing drawings for it. But next to where the female, the ladies bathroom is, there's an old office there. That is going to be taken up with a handicap accessible, a sex bathroom, okay? So that will also be part of the project. It's very close to water, sewer, um, compared to renovating everything. Hopefully we can do some other upgrades to the bathroom except, but that is, that is to make us handicap, um, accessible. And then there'll also be some, which our people will do some minor ramps, you know, to get up, it's a little step in the building, so. That's tentative where we're at, I guess. Looking for support to move even forward.
All right, I think it sounds like a good plan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine point zero, adopt resolution for reduction of probationary teachers for two thousand sixteen seventeen, second motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Will you, will you read, this is the, the single one here?
Yep. Member Gordy Dowd introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to reduction of the teaching contract of Alexandra, Alexandra Ringhoff, a probationary teacher. Whereas Alexandra Ringhoff is a probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number three sixty one, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD three sixty one and Edmund Local three thirty one, that the teaching contract of Alexandra Ringhoff, a probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one, will be reduced from one point zero FTE to four five five FTE at the close of the current two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding reduction of her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be a substantially, uh, written letter that will be mailed to her. The motion for the adoption of the resolution was duly seconded by, I suppose I had it wrong, I had Mike in the first and Gordy in the second, sorry, I apologize, I was a draw. Was duly seconded by Gordy and. We need to, roll call vote.
And I would just put in, um, that it is the understanding, uh, this one individual was on continuing the contract and that is why this one is separate from the others. She wrote a continuing contract about a point four five five that we recognize in May.
Okay.
That's why it's held from the others.
Okay. All right, so roll call vote, Gordy Dowd?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride?
Aye.
Kevin Gro, oh, sorry. And all in favor and no may, motion carried. Item ten point zero, adopt resolutions for non-renewal of probationary teachers for two thousand sixteen and seventeen. Item ten point one, could I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Member Gordy introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to termination and non-renewal of teaching contract of Carly Henderson, probationary teacher. Whereas Carly Henderson is a probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number three sixty one, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD three sixty one and Edmund Local three thirty one, that the teaching contract of Carly Henderson, probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one, is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of her contract as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Tony and roll call vote. Gordy Dowd?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride?
Aye.
And all in favor and non-voting against, whereas said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Item ten point two. Uh, Joseph Kraus, could I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Member Mike Holden introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Joseph Kraus, probationary teacher. Whereas Joseph Kraus is a probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number three sixty one, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD three sixty one and Edmund Local three thirty one, that the teaching contract of Joseph Kraus, probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one, is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of his contract as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Gordy and vote being taken thereof. Gordy Dowd?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Nay.
Heather McBride?
Aye.
Okay, uh, vote being taken thereof, the following voted in favor of, for one, may. Motion passed and adopted. Item ten point three, Michael Paulson, could I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Member Mike Holden introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to termination and non-renewal of teaching contract of Michael Paulson, probationary teacher. Whereas Michael Paulson is a probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number three sixty one, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD three sixty one and Edmund Local three thirty one, that the teaching contract of Michael Paulson, probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one, is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of his contract as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Gordy and vote being taken, Gordy Dowd?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride? And vote being taken thereof, all voted aye and the vote in where upon said resolution was duly passed and adopted. Item eleven point zero, adopt resolution for renewal of probationary teachers for chosen sixteen seventeen school year. Eleven point one, Mason Imhoff, could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. Member Mike Holden introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teacher Mason Imhoff. Whereas Mason Imhoff is a probationary teacher in independent school district number three sixty one. Whereas Mason Imhoff has successfully completed probationary teaching year for two thousand fifteen sixteen. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number three sixty one, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD three sixty one and Edmund Local three thirty one, that Mason Imhoff is hereby granted a probationary teaching position to the extent of one point zero FTE for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, as evidenced by observation and recommendation of the administration. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding renewal of his probation position as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Heather McBride and vote being taken. Gordy?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride? And vote being taken thereof. The following voted in favor thereof, all. And said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Item 11.2, Leila Renberg. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Member Gordy Dahl introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teacher Leila Renberg. Whereas Leila Renberg is a probationary teacher in independent school district number 361. And whereas Leila Renberg has successfully completed a probationary teaching year for 2015-16. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 361, then pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD 361 and Edmund Local 331, that Leila Renberg is hereby granted a probationary teaching position to the extent of 0.818 FTE for the 2016-17 school year, as evidenced by observation and recommendation of the administration. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding renewal of her probationary position as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Tony and vote being taken thereof. Gordy Dahl?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride? And all voted in favor thereof, whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Item 11.3, Stacy Robar. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Member Mike Holden introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to renewal of the teaching contract of Stacy Robar, probationary teacher. Whereas Stacy Robar is a probationary teacher in independent school district number 361. And whereas Stacy Robar has successfully completed probationary teaching year for 2015-16. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 361, then pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD 361 and Edmund Local 331. That Stacy Robar is hereby granted a probationary teaching position to the extent of 0.818 FTE for the 2016-17 school year, as evidenced by observation and recommendation of the administration. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding renewal of her probationary position as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Tony and upon vote being taken thereof. Gordy Dahl?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride?
Aye.
And all voting in favor thereof, whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Item 11.4, Carla Olsen Line. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Member Mike Holden introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relates to renewal of the teaching contract of Carla Olsen Line, probationary teacher. Whereas Carla Olsen Line is a probationary teacher in independent school district number 361. And whereas Carla Olsen Line has successfully completed probationary teaching year for 2015-16. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 361, then pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, and the collective bargaining agreement between ISD 361 and Edmund Local 331. That Carla Olsen Line is hereby granted a probationary teaching position to the extent of 0.60 FTE for the 2016-17 school year, as evidenced by observation and recommendation of the administration. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding renewal of her probationary position as provided by law. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Heather McBride and upon vote being taken thereof. Gordy Dahl?
Aye.
Michelle Hemner?
Aye.
Michael Holden?
Aye.
Tony Corpi?
Aye.
Heather McBride?
Aye.
And all voting in favor thereof, whereupon said resolution was duly passed and adopted. Item 12.0, program consent. Approve the program consent agenda items as presented. 12.1, approve donations in the amount of $4,229.15. 80 carnations from Gerhardt's floral for the ECFE Mountains Party with value of $80. 50 carnations from Two Star Credit Union, ECFE Party, $50. Boise paper pallet of copy paper to FHS, value $1,027. Dean and Jacqueline Blaze Bronco Hall of Fame, $500. Target take charge of education Falls High School, $383.83. Target take charge of education West End Elementary, $107.13. Northern Reliable Insurance Bronco Hall of Fame, $50. Mr. Pete Foundation, Banks Textile Field Trip, $308.50. Partners in Education Sixth Grade Science Fair Supplies, $316.80. Partners in Education FPS Supplies, $179.60. Perfectly Posh Dean Olerson FHS Band Trip, $201.25. Bronco Baseball Boosters Taurus New Pitching Machine, $202.98. Partners in Education Desk Seat Pouches, $362.60. Item 12.2, approve the minutes from the regular meeting of February 16th and the special meeting of February 22nd, 2016. Item 12.3, approve the bills due payable amounting to $441,142.24. Item 12.4, approve the 2016-17 contract with the InterQuest Detection Canines. Item 12.5, approve the revised indoor air quality program management plan. Item 12.6, acknowledge acceptance of a reading core grant and subsequent hire of a part-time literacy tutor to be paid through grant funds for 2016-17 school year. Item 12.7, affirm continuation of the early release Wednesday schedule for 2016-17 school year. Could I have a motion to approve the program consent agenda items as presented? So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
If I can comment on a couple of things. First of all, a paper question. Canine, which we've had for numerous years. I will be very... Appreciative of a local person that came forth. I guess I didn't ask if I could present it at the board, so I'm not going to, but I'll talk about it. Of one of our, I think the Board of Patrol or Customs, whatever. They have service dogs that they're willing to come work with us. Legally, they can be brought into the court system and looking to help the district out monetarily wise. This is roughly a $30,000 expenditure. The reason it's still on is every dog is trained to do different searching. Theirs does not search for alcohol, does not search for ammunition. Those are legal things that we are concerned about. We may still use them, but I guess I'm recommending that we keep a contract with this company. And because those are two concerning items at a school. You know, we search the parking lot locker or whatever. Ammo and alcohol belong with the others, the drugs and different things. Theirs goes after the drugs and narcotics and stuff like that. So bringing that out there on the board so it shows, you know, we'd be okay. We're not searching for ammo or alcohol. I think they could provide as good or better service, you know. But they are open, they understand even if we have this group who would like them to come and work and have a presence, they would like to be involved. So it's there. That's what I would like to hit on there. I would, and I don't mean to put Missy on the spot. Elementary Missy specifically applied for the reading. Can give you some information. They've secured a grant. Want to speak to it?
Yeah, we secured a part-time grant. There was a lot of people that applied this year. So that will secure like a scooter that work five hours a day, Monday to Friday. And they'll be trained in like 10 different best practice interventions. So they'll work with eight to 14 kids throughout the school year. They just work individually. And then they'll be supervised by gen or... So the only cost will be to us, we'll see, like send gens to training and that's our...
Thank you. What a great opportunity.
Yeah, it's a good program.
Do you know what part-time means?
Five hours a day.
Five hours.
You can make ass. Obviously, it's our supervision and anyways, we don't want our building. You'll be involved in the process.
Yeah, and so it's a little bit more jobs involved in that process. So we'll post now and get that person secured. They'll get like a modest living allowance and then maybe some education reimbursement. But the living allowance I think is pretty modest.
The other piece I would like to touch on is the last item, continuation of the program these Wednesdays. I'm recommending that we continue to go forward specifically with, I'm not going to say a different approach, but at least I can say one, maybe two weeks, month next year, looking at the technology. Well, you know, exploring and my thoughts, it's not a way out, but it might be. I'll only be wanting to be in high school next week. But looking at school, school hygiene, working with staff to go down that road, provide training. Like I say, the other things will continue with PBIS, I'm taking the immigrating process. Data analysis.
So the administration feels that earlier was a success. Would say yes. Why it brought you to that?
It's having time to specifically get together and meet. They look at data, they have PBIS, a lot of the activities, grade level meetings. I think you can talk to anyone here. Do we have specific, you know, a number to say we went reading on this grade or this market this? No, we don't. But it's a time that I would say is very effective. You come in on Wednesday at 3:40, not people waiting on the walk over there. You know, they use the time well. So I guess that is where the activation comes from. I'm just thinking like exploring the technology route. Where else do we find, if we don't consistently give bits and pieces an hour at a time?
And students enjoy it a lot more too. Students enjoy it a lot more too. It helps the week go by faster.
That's all but further comments. I haven't listened to any questions.
On the InterQuest detection canines, so if we choose to have a contract with them as well as the local person, is there a specific dollar amount that needs to go in InterQuest? Ahead of time or is that just a per visit?
It's per visit here, going at, I think it was nine visits in the contract. The locals said there would not be, you know, as long as, you know, we can give them a heads up. We'd like you, you know, Wednesday or Friday or whatever, they can fit it in the schedule.
So we can retain both services with no additional cost? I think that's a good idea. All right, any other discussion? All right, item 12.2, program consent. Approve the program consent agenda as presented. We have motion by Tony and a second by Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item 13.0, personal consent. Approve the personal consent agenda item as presented. 13.1, accept the resignation of David Gooch, assistant principal with last day of employment, June 30, 2016. Could I have a motion?
So move.
And a second, second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Gooch, for your service at District End. And good luck with your new position.
You too. I want to thank the board for this, for the wonderful opportunity. You have an awesome school here and awesome staff. And just have a wonderful year, great students.
You were awesome.
Thank you.
Hey, you were awesome.
Now, there's some big shoes left for somebody else to fill. You set my standard, so thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item 14.0, policy consent. Approve policy consent agenda items as presented. 14.1, policy 618, assessment of student achievement. And 14.2, policy 705, investment. Could I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item 15.0, administrative reports. Okay, first, Mr. Gooch.
Enrollment on February 16th, our last board meeting was 6:12. Our current enrollment as of today is 6:17, so we're up five students. We're up one student in sixth grade, up one student in seventh grade, down two students in eighth grade, up two students in ninth grade, 10th grade, we're up two students, 11th grade, we're up two students, and 12th grade, we're down one student. So again, the current enrollment, 6:17, and a month ago was 6:12. We will be starting MCA testing tomorrow for reading and science and will be continuing testing through April. The PBIS Tier 2 team has been meeting with individual students. The response by teachers and students have been very successful. Another bull is going to state.
Item 15.2, who must be?
Our enrollment is still at 582. He is in the fifth grade this month and we also got in first graders who we lost. And kindergarten. And then I'm going to go up to be for a grant, but you already know that. We're getting ready for our annual MCA test, which will be on Tuesday, March 29th at 1:30. And we're working to set goals with students in grades three through five to increase an extra three points from their previous score. For greater schools, it's a little different because they have not already taken the MCA test. In April, we have a free event coming for families called Wild Animal Adventures. And that's going to be on April 18th. It's a little ways out, but I know that's already our working nights. I wanted to tell you about that now. And that will be in the Falls High School gym. And that will be, our company comes and they bring like five exotic animals and they do a show. So there'll be two 30-minute shows for the kids and they're free for families. So we'd like to put that on in an effort to increase family engagement with their kids in our district. So hopefully that's well attended. We have about 81 kindergartners that will be registering. What we did is we counted our physical registrations that we have. And then we also went through the census and called and got verbal confirmation of where those people were attended. So we've got 81 confirmed that they're going to be attending kindergarten in our district. There's about 10 people on that list that we don't have phone numbers for, so aren't able to contact at this time. And that, of course, doesn't include anything that might move into somewhere or put them on that list. So that I think is a good number to start. And I think we have about 108 preschool kids registered so far.
Anything else? Thank you. 15.3, Mr. Kevin Grover.
I have several things here just to touch on. First of all, I again would personally reiterate thanking the staff that we have, you know, made tough calls on tonight, or people that have chosen to resign. Thank you for the time, service, and you know, we have this tough... Thank you for the time served and that we have this tough year and we need to acknowledge each one. But as I said, said earlier, we have unfortunately lost some good staff for their help in the district. Second thing, and I missed going some things your way because getting what Mr. Gooch was doing. And I have two things from, that were given to me from the music department. One, our choral group went to the Boundary Waters Choral Festival. I was given a copy to share with the board. It's a nice letter thanking the group. I'm just going to read a piece of it. Is it, "It is our delight to watch kids grow together during the day, laugh, second half sore legs." You should be very proud of all your students and your director, Tamara Keenich. She is very talented and your choir is delightful. Again, there's more to a letter, but Silver Bay Mountain Iron and Healy in the Falls were at this festival. They get together, work together. The other one that came was informing us, again from Mrs. Keenich, that the choir results from section seven A contest at Masabi East in Aurora, the mixed chorus category, they received an overall superior rating. Nine students who participated, eight solos and two ensembles. Solos received five superior and two excellent ratings. And our T B Duett and S S A ensemble will receive superior ratings. So congratulations to that group, I guess. I just wanted to give you a heads up and a couple of, you've asked, the local five-ten contract, which was tentatively agreed upon, is not on here. The reason being is we're working out a question that came up on catastrophic leave. And so I have submitted language for them to look at and that's where we're at. So hopefully, there was also a clarification, clarification on a number, which is a minor adjustment, no major issue at this point. We're just trying to make sure it's as clean as possible when it goes forward. So that's where we're at with that. There's a document and I believe everyone got a copy and I don't remember what meeting we're at. And I believe Mr. Dalton, you were the one that possibly asked. The business office has put together a rough sketch. We can dig more into anything that you so desire on the Nerf line special ed co-op numbers. And if you find it, I will kind of explain the different costs. Some are a set rate, others are things that we can directly pay for depending on the use. So on the top, you notice there's a special ed director, which would be Reggie. We pay a portion, when we say Mars Coordinator, for the most part Sue does our stuff. But they have a person down there that, again, I think is a part-time position that helps with some Mars coordination for those students. There's also then a couple coordinators that work with our district. Business purpose for last school year, because those are concrete numbers, okay? So last year, we had several coordinators that helped. We may see them or may not. We used to have Brian and now it's Jackie, but Brian is in here. There's other people that work with the psychologists and so on. You notice every school pays a set amount, it is thirteen point seven eight percent, okay? So we would pay that, Virginia pays that, everyone pays that. So those costs are there. There's the coordinator, that two of them that actually have hours in, we pay that, is Brian and someone else was working. That cost varies. There's coordinator, E S Y is extended school year. It's a small number, but that means in the summer. There's miscellaneous project costs, that's mileage and things like that. Some indirect costs which are minor, comes out to be ninety-nine, might as well say a hundred thousand dollars, okay? Down below then, we pay for psychologist services through them. And again, we don't pay each time they come. There's actually seven psychologists now down there. There were six and one that they contracted with last year because of this shortage. Again, we pay a set rate. And I can't specifically tell you if we're getting more than the allotted time or less than. But in general, if we went on our own, and again, this is out for discussion, we would have to secure the psychologist cost. What you don't see on here is like O T, P T, speech, because we're paying those. We pay locally for O T, P T. We pay some locally for speech and we also, there's a contract through the co-op with speech partners. So those are things we would pay, whether we had it on or not. So roughly a hundred, and I'm just saying roughly, because a hundred thousand dollars is what we would pay to administer special ed. It's give or take, you know, that's benefits, sour benefits, you know. And then like I say, psych services, you can look at what we're paying. And then D C S E instructor, which is forty-six, we contract through them because a few years back we needed another instructor. We didn't know how long we could sustain or not. So the co-op actually, you know, hires that, but the person is here full-time. And so again, that's a cost that we're paying whether we did it ourselves or we did it through. Again, just for discussion you can take, look at. Questions, just off the top of your head, you have that time to look at and work with.
Martha Learning Center.
Yep. Okay. One thing that's coming up and I just, I have no doubt whatsoever. We did the City Five advertisement. It was a six-month deal that goes through June fifteenth. It's, I think, I believe it was seventeen hundred fifty dollars. Seen it or not. Question they're going around because the crew is coming to me, they're filming. You can run the same thing again or you can do something different. But obviously, it goes through the middle of June. So I mean, we're a little ways off, but if we're going to change something, they come in sometime in April to do their visit. I guess, again, we had the discussion, it takes sometimes, or the comment, it takes money to make money? Or do we want to continue that? Should we let the same thing roll? Should we take six months off? I'm not an advertising expert, but I mean, I think, I mean, I've heard people have mentioned it to me that they've seen it and it's nice, it's quick, it's a lot of stuff, you know, short amount of time. Or is there something different we would like to try? I just throw it out because if we're going to do something different, we need to have a direct meeting with them. Because they come in a set week, they're videoing. We can run the same thing or we want to explore, but we don't have, we quite know it this time. So I just, I just got a question posed a couple of days ago.
I guess with our reductions, I, personally, I'm inclined to let it go for six months. That's what I understand. That's just my sense.
All right, thanks.
That's a lot of money.
Feel differently, I mean, I can bring it back. It just came and if we were going to video something, we have to schedule it. The only other thing I have is for the administrative committee, which is Gordy, Mike and Michelle to tentatively start talking to talk about my contract. I don't need a specific date, but if you're ready, some discussion.
With all of us together, couldn't we set a date?
I mean, if you want, it's all for you guys.
Let's get her done.
You tell me.
Can I make a seat? Yeah. Can you come in during the day? Everybody can come in during the day.
I'd have to be afternoon.
I'm here.
Four, three, three?
Sure.
Other than that, I don't have anything else on my list.
Okay, thank you. Item sixteen point zero, any committee reports?
Try to make it short and sweet, I guess. February, we had Dr. Seuss Week and there was many interesting outfits on the school. Sticking notes were put on the windows of the cafeteria. It said, take what you need, give what you can. Students in grade six through twelve competed in a recycling project to see who could collect the most plastic bottles and cans for our student council state recycling project. Tenth grade class won the contest and will receive a repeat party around March. Students filled out data match surveys and were two dollars a piece. And on Valentine's Day, boys wore hearts on their shirts. And if they talked to girls, they'd give their heart to the girl. March, student council made cookies for the local police, postal workers, firemen and E M Ts as a round of act of kindness. On March tenth, nine students went to Two Harbers High School for the Northeast Division Student Council's winter meeting. Six schools from the division attended. Elections were held for next year's executive board with two students from F H S running for a position. Connie Gray ran for president and Christian Nelson ran for treasurer. Neither student unfortunately was elected, but did an excellent job with their speeches and campaigns. Ending her term as president was, of that was F H S student on Capitol. Student council actually won the U Rock Award and we beat Hitting with over three hundred, or three thousand points for the award. And that award we got two years ago. And also upcoming events. Student council members, some student council members will be attending the Minnesota Association of Student Council State Convention in April. And elections for next year council will be held in May. Also, we will be having a blood drive on April twenty-sixth. And spring sports week will take place the last week of April. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Adjournment. Could I adjourn the meeting at six twenty-four? Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.